Never again.
I'd like to call this regular school board meeting of the DC Everest Area School District to order. First up is roll call. Josh?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Katie?
Here.
Yi?
Here.
Shannon?
Here.
Ben?
Here.
And I am here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which sustains, one nation, under God, in the highest law with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, this requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes. Uh, we have no public comment tonight. Next up is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Larry can take it.
Alright, Larry's got the second. This requires a roll call vote. Josh?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Yi?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Uh, next up is reports and considerations. Wasbe, Shannon?
The Wasbe Policy and Resolutions Committee is meeting on September 26th and 27th to review and advance resolutions submitted to the committee. Uh, we will meet again November 7th to further refine and finalize those resolutions that will be voted on by the delegate assembly at the state convention in January. Uh, the resolution packets likely will be published the first week of December for school boards to review if they so choose. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Next up is Cisa Nye. Larry?
We had our, our meeting on Wednesday, September 3rd. Um, included in your background material is some information on the grants, which is just one of the things that they do. They, uh, that's part of their continuous, uh, school improvement services. They call it the CSI team, not to be confused with the CSI team on TV. Um, and they comment, you know, they don't, they don't hire anybody who has less than five years of experience because you have to have street credit to walk into the room to counsel anybody on room management or all that sort of stuff. They commented 12 years ago, Al was the only guy in the CSI team. Now they're up to 16 people. Uh, they do teacher licensing and this whole grant thing is, is just really important. We get a lot of grants and these grants really supplement what the, the, add to what the limitations we have here at the board. You know, we've only got what we've got in these. So the, a lot of these smaller schools, schools just don't have grant writing people. They're all busy teaching classes. So that's, it's a real important part of the thing. Um, I guess that's about it on the line of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And next up, uh, we have our new student representative for this year. Uh, it is Ava Ben Dixon. Uh, welcome Ava.
Hello. Um, my name is Ava Ben Dixon and I'm going to be the student representative for the school year. To start, homecoming is on its way and for student council, we have prepared, we have started with preparation. The theme this year is once upon a homecoming where fairy tales will be filled throughout the halls. Many other clubs have started having meetings to prepare for homecoming in the coming year, like DECA, FBLA, FFA, and much more. Uh, this homecoming, we plan to make a greater difference to make people more included in our celebration and promote our school spirit. Instead of just decorating the halls, we plan to decorate the main entrance to make walking into the school feel magical. Last week, we had a great turnout at our football, soccer, and volleyball games against West, but it is not just our sports and clubs getting ready for the year. The band has been practicing every day for their performances and SpongeBob the Musical has announced their cast list and are looking for help from students for their crew. And there's also an opening musical to break in the theater called Dare to Dream, which is performing October 10th through the 13th. In conclusion, students have started adjusting to their new school year and have been enjoying the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is the superintendent's report. Dr. Nye?
Uh, my update will be brief tonight. Uh, I want to start by acknowledging it's been a super smooth start, uh, to the return of the school year and, uh, grateful for what all of our staff have done to make that happen and super, super excited to have our students back. Um, sometimes we take it for granted when things go smoothly like that and I, I do want to give a shout out to our leaders. We don't always call out their work explicitly. We want the focus to be on, on kids and what happens in the classroom, but, um, I'm just super proud of what the team is doing right now. Um, and they set the stage for that student experience without a doubt. So that work, uh, will show up in tonight's agenda in a couple of different ways. Um, you'll see a really high level of focus within Jeff's professional development report. Um, and Kelly will present some recommendations related to enhancing staff benefits, uh, that we're also super excited with and that work is really months and months, uh, in the making. So, um, we've got great people across all roles and I definitely wanted to give a nod to our leaders tonight, uh, for their work behind the scenes to set the stage for a new school year. Um, we had a great kickoff and, uh, Mr. Schaefer asked to interject a couple of things related to that. So I'm gonna turn it over to him before I-
Thank you, Casey. Two comments. First, uh, to all the board members who were unable, working and unable to attend it. It was, uh, uh, we, uh, they always introduce board members at the beginning. I'm always a little uncomfortable with that. I don't know, embarrassed or, um, well, anyway. So they, everyone has different colored t-shirts for their different schools, you know, getting the school spirit up. It was just a great time. We, then they had everybody go out on the field at Steam Stadium. We had all these little plastic cones that they do, uh, volleyball practice or soccer practice around and you had to get five different colored t-shirts around each one. Then we kicked around, passed around a little ball. It was just a fun, crazy thing to do. That all got done. And my, for my second point, I hadn't had any plans for dinner. So they had pizza. So I went over to Junior High, got my piece of pizza. It was kind of sunny and hot out a little bit. So I went out the south doors there to where the trees are because it was nice and shady. And, uh, well, Polley kind of comes up wearing a gray t-shirt. She's on the lunch squad, a young person, you know, looked like she could have been one of the students practically. Saying, I, you're, you're one of the people, the, the school board members that, yes, I am. Well, I, I came here, I wanted to thank you. Said, no, no, I'm here to thank you because, you know, in this country, it still bothers me that, you know, some of our students, except for the food that you provide them, some of our students wouldn't get any food. She said, that's why I had to shake your hand because I was one of those students. So, what we do at this table matters. It does really matter to people. Back to you, Casey.
Yeah, that's a great reminder and, um, kickoff was, was fun. Definitely lighthearted, um, with the intent of trying to get people seeing each other across their different roles, but, um, people do appreciate the, the board and, um, uh, definitely, uh, grateful for what you do and thank you. And thanks to those of you that were there and thanks to all the staff that made that day happen. A lot of fun. Um, one other, uh, topic that I did want to hit on, uh, although definitely preliminary, our third Friday count looks like will be down around 81 resident students. Um, we watch our early grades very closely as you know. Um, kindergarten numbers really set the stage for, um, K through 12. Um, and so as anticipated, we're more than a section down there with close to 30 fewer students in kindergarten. So, um, really that's in line with what we have seen in our, um, enrollment study with our projections. And so, um, not necessarily anything shocking, but, um, accurate and tracking as we anticipated. And we'll give you a full report, uh, next month. And that is my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Nye. Uh, next up is our unfinished, uh, business, which is, uh, first is mission moment and evergreen journey for Olivia Marcel.
Well, I'm gonna invite the team up here. Um, Mr. Sturm, Mr. Brandt, and Olivia Marcel, and, uh, just do a little introduction before I turn it over to Phil. So, um, had the good fortune to know, um, Olivia as a student at the middle school back in the day. I've had a chance to see her, um, in different settings across the district as she has made her own journey, um, as an educator herself and working with our staff in practicum roles and, um, just getting experiences, um, really influencing other, uh, young people. And now, uh, we get to see her as, uh, both, uh, an employee and a volunteer, uh, in really cool work at the high school. And, uh, these two gentlemen are gonna talk a little bit more about that and the impact that Ava make, Olivia makes, excuse me. Um, definitely a unique journey and somebody that we're really fortunate to have. So.
So as Dr. Nye stated, my name is Phil Sturm and I am, um, entering my third fall with the school district. Um, and three years ago when I started, I didn't realize at the time that my start here in the district kind of coincided with Olivia's return to the district. Um, and early on in that fall, a need for a substitute, uh, support staff member arose and in walked this outspoken, super friendly, nice young lady. I'm always looking to do the best she could. How can I help? Where should I go? What do you need me to do? I mean, throughout the course of that school year, more opportunities for substitute arose and that same, uh, helpful young lady walked in. And it became apparent that the high school was a good fit for Olivia. And quite honestly, Olivia was a good fit for the high school. So much so that it kind of morphed into, when I'm not subbing, can I just come in and volunteer my time? And that's a situation that most schools aren't fortunate enough to have. So with that being said, conversations occurred of how can we utilize this to make it meaningful for Olivia and impact their students, uh, the best way possible? And through that, um, some consistency with our, our cafe, the coffee shop that's in the school store, um, some consistency, that opportunity arose and Olivia took that. And that's kind of exactly what she provided. Um, some consistency, uh, particularly in the morning, um, she's coordinated herself with the, the person that, um, runs the coffee shop in the afternoon and she's taken that and run with it. And we couldn't have, uh, it couldn't have worked out any better. Um, so for someone that's relatively new to the district and just watching this all unfold, I'm, I'm very proud and excited to see, um, her being recognized as the mission moment person for this evening. Um, with that being said, Jeremy Brandt, who has known Olivia a little bit longer, could finish introducing her.
As Phil said, I'm Jeremy Brandt. This is my 11th year in the district. Um, I don't know how long ago it was. In my first couple of years, met Olivia. Um, I'm, it's a privilege that I've been able to see Olivia get through high school, have her experience in college, and I've been able to talk to Olivia and hear how her college experience was. Um, she made her way back to DC Everest as a sub, as Mr. Sturm said, and we were just so blessed that she wanted to spend her time with us in the Forest Cafe. Um, the students really enjoy Olivia. She does a great job with them. Um, it's wonderful to see the time you spent and effort you put into our students. Um, I get to see them grow and how much you care about them every day. Yeah. So next we have a message from a couple of the students that you work with.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia, for coffee shop.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms.
Ms.
Olivia.
Aliyah.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
Thank you, Ms. Olivia.
We really appreciate everything you do. Thank you for everything you do for our students.
Promised Olivia she didn't have to speak, but we'd give her an opportunity if she wanted to. Do you want to say anything?
Yes, I just want to say thank you so much for continuing, continuing me to allow me to work with the students with disabilities like myself. And thank you for allowing me to be the mission moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. What an inspiring story.
And half the room are Olivia fans and the other half are now Olivia fans. So.
Uh, next up we have new business, starting with the staff professional development update. Jeff?
I respectfully ask to move my agenda item later because I don't want to follow that.
Are you gonna make me cry, Jeff? The bar's been set.
No, I, I, the purpose of the memo is to, uh, show some appreciation for our staff and the work that they do over the course of the summer. So our teachers and staff have, have worked on, um, anything from behavior to safety to academics. And maybe they add for this, um, summer's work with some of the work of our principal team. As Dr. Nye mentioned, uh, we had a team go to, uh, small team go to our, uh, to a solution tree conference as we really worked to revamp and enhance our, uh, our work around professional learning communities. Uh, and then it will be, uh, the core work of our team moving forward through the course of the school year. So we are, our principal team is participating in the OSA, um, leading PLCs Academy this year. So, uh, really working to, um, uh, grow the, the knowledge of our leadership team to impact the knowledge of our, our teaching team and really utilize our, our PLCs to impact, uh, teaching and learning and, and hopefully move the needle for, for students. So, um, appreciate the opportunity to, to give those experiences to our teams. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Madam President?
Yep.
Um, so, uh, Dr. Lindell, I'm just kind of curious, how are we, um, seeing the levels? I mean, the year before, are we seeing increase of individuals that are in P, uh, in PD, professional development? I'm just kind of curious. Has it been pretty steady?
Uh, yeah, that's number, I was gonna have that written down because I did look at it. That number is up from last year, the number of hours and, and the number of staff members, I think was pretty close to, to even, um, so up a little bit in number of hours, uh, but not a significant amount.
Thank you.
Just a thank you. I know that's well deserved time off. I don't know how many people we have listening today, but, um, to all the staff, uh, obviously that's time that's earned for them to be off. So to invest in themselves and how they can continue to be better in the classroom, look at different new innovative things that continue to keep us kind of on that cutting edge of education. Just a thank you on behalf of the board to everyone who, who took the time to participate in those PD activities.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you very much. Uh, next up is the annual meeting as submitted in your background. I'm not sure that we need to talk about this. So I will make a motion to approve the agenda for the annual meeting slash budget hearing as attached in the packet. Is there a second?
Second.
This requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up is staff stipend, which does require background.
Just remember the annual meeting's the most exciting. Meeting of the year for any licensed business manager, Super Bowl, remember? Alright, um, so when we approved wage increases for all staff last spring, it was based on CPI 2.95%. Um, we did say that we would like to, once the state budget was finalized, um, consider doing something more, um, in the form of a one-time stipend. So I am bringing forth a recommendation tonight, um, that would issue, uh, stipend to all employees, um, who are, were employed with us prior to June 1st, um, so returning, and this is in addition to their, their, um, increase from the previous year. Um, stipend amounts will be $600 for each regular employee scheduled to work more than 20 hours per week, um, and $300 for anyone scheduled to work 20 hours or less per week. Um, we did do a one-time stipend, um, prior to my time, but years ago, and we prorated it by every FTE and opted to just go with kind of like a full-time and a part-time, um, stipend this time around. And again, I want to say scheduled, so that includes school level employees who their FTE may be less, um, but still scheduled to work more than 20 hours a week, um, for the school year as well. The stipends will be paid out on the first payroll in December. Um, and this impacts any, um, what we would define in the handbook as regular employees. So those employees working exclusively or only in like a casual seasonal occasional miscellaneous, um, role would not be eligible. So we were able to build this into the budget and it's a way to try to give a little bit more, um, to those increases from the CPI of 2.95%. Um, we certainly value our employees. I know we always take great pride in wanting it to be a great place to work and this is a way that we'd like to do this, um, to support staff retention and morale.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I will make a motion to provide a one-time stipend for employees who were employed prior to June 1st, 2025 in a regular position and continue to work in a regular position in the amounts of $600 for each regularly, regular employee scheduled to work more than 20 hours per week and $300 for each regular employee scheduled to work 20 hours or less per week. Is there a second with that?
Second.
Uh, discussion. Hearing none, this requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
I'm staying.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up is HSA contribution.
Last month, uh, you approved the increase to our health, um, insurance and we talked about the rising cost of healthcare. So as we looked at finalizing the budget and remaining dollars, um, we'd like to offer, to help offset those added costs, uh, a district HSA contribution to any employee who's enrolled in the, um, for each employee enrolled in the district health plan, that would be they have to be the one, um, the member subscribed to that, um, it, in the amount of $100. And although that may seem modest, we feel like it's an initial first step and a way to help, um, offset those costs and something that we want to continue to look at expanding potentially in the future. Um, again, being this is we pay $100, employees get $100. This, um, staff will complete their HSA deduction forms during open enrollment in November and this $100 would be contributed, um, into their accounts in January. So I would recommend that we provide this benefit to those on our district health plan.
Is there a motion for the district to make the $100 contribution for each employee enrolled in the district health plan to the HSA accounts?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I have one question. How many, about how many people is that?
Just over 500.
Just over 500.
Yeah. We'll have to look, but I'm going, but I'm, I think it's about that. 520-ish, I think.
Any additional questions?
Yeah. Is this part of a, you said this is the first step. Is, is there a long-term plan or strategy for what that $100 HSA contribution might turn into?
I should also add, we have on and off through the years done this before. We have, it's so, it's not the, the only time we've ever done this. Um, and in fact, I think three or four years ago, 200 or 400, 200 single plans, 400 family plans was done, um, or issued. It's one of those things that we continued to think about. That was a huge jump this year, 8% and 15%. What is something we could do? And this is, quite honestly, what we could afford within the budget. But I just think that as we continue to see deductibles increasing and things climbing, that we would like to, to continually do this and, and try to increase the amount. Though, and again, so last time we did this, I want to say is four years ago, some of you that were here, it was 200 and 400. So.
And I think the long-range strategy, again, modest amount, right? We're not trying to, uh, pretend that it's not, but it's a jumpstart for the number of people that we know that don't have that set up. So a number of the things that we're doing, um, I think in this budget go-around, um, outside of compensation directly are trying to sort of round out some gaps that we're seeing in, uh, what people have. So this is one of them and I think it's a great, um, step forward in that area. So. And so this, this would be a one-time, one-year?
Yeah.
Contribution not to be done in future years unless we have budget?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. I think, I think it's a good plan. I think it's a good idea. You know, we want to be competitive in terms of what we're offering for health insurance, especially considering the cost, uh, to families for insurance. Um, so definitely support this and I would support a long-term plan to increase that, um, and make it more permanent.
Any additional discussion on this? Hearing none, this requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes. Next up are the policies. Um, would anyone like to remove a policy to discuss before we make a motion to approve them? Yep.
Can we remove, uh, policy number 0144.5, board members' behavior and code of conduct to be discussed separately?
Alright, any additional removed to discuss? Okay.
1561, consent agenda. 2522, instructing girls. 3120, employment of substitutes. And, uh, 3.
Sure. So we'll. You want to do them all? I was gonna do the ones that no one had any comments on first and then we'll discuss them and then we can make motions for the second batch. Is that alright? Alright. Um, is there a motion to approve, um, E1, E4, E5, E8, E9, E11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, and 28?
So moved.
Is there a second? Uh, any discussion on these? Requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, that passes. Next up, we will discuss, um, the rest of them. 144.5, um, Yi, this was your?
Yeah, so, um, a couple of questions I have here is, I, I don't have concerns with some of the language up there. I do have concerns, not concerns, but questions on the page, on page three, uh, three out of four, under board members' use of electronics, their kind of communication devices prohibited. I guess I'm kind of curious as to the background of how this came to be. Is this a state statute that's requiring us to do this or is this just a simple policy that was brought up for, um, to be included into this?
And you are, um, let's see here.
Board member behavior code of conduct, board member use of electronic communicate-
That was one back, sorry.
Specific section. I had a question about that one as well. I understand the intent, but.
Yeah, recommendation from Neola, um, obviously an optional one. So it could be struck if you prefer that as a board. So, background, uh, from Neola on this one, um, they actually talk more about, um, general clarifying language in a couple of spots, which you can see. Um, and then their big focus in their quick summary is, uh, direct reference to conflict of interest. So they're not highlighting this as the driver. Um, so at a high level, um, I don't think it's critical if we choose to go a different direction.
The, the question I have is what, how exactly will we enforce this? I mean, you can't really take away people's phones. You can't really give them a zero on a test to, you know, um, so how exactly would we enforce it if a school board member does use their phones, et cetera? And I take notes of mine ahead of time and then I bring back, I bring here. So I'm just kind of curious as to what would the consequences be?
My guess is it's just a best practice recommendation?
I think it's the word prohibited. Like I had a question about that. Like I don't use my phone in a meeting, but sometimes my kids will text me and need something or am I, are you gonna pick me up or is dad gonna pick me up or something like that? So under this policy, that would be prohibited. And what would the consequence be if I were to send no or, you know, something like that? So I think just additional clarification. I support the language, the intent of the language, because I do think we shouldn't be engaging, multitasking. We should be focused on the nature of the meeting, but perhaps some additional flexibility around. I know we have got the emergency, but then what constitutes an emergency?
I think to add to that, who would decide that emergence? It's an emergency. Do we appeal it to the president to decide that as well or how exactly does that work as well?
I'd recommend striking it. Because if somehow I'm the decider, I, I worry about the consequences of you not responding to your children. So like, I would recommend we remove it. I don't see any dire consequences. I think you're, uh, an engaged board and, um, I think we could have dropped this. So, but your call. I'll, I'll disagree. I think we can just leave it in there. I think it's, it's more about etiquette, you know, for the most part. You know, if there's a kid texting that needs to be picked up, I think that's acceptable. But, you know, in terms of enforcement, I think we just call each other on and say, hey, Josh, why are you using your phone so much? Turn it off. We got a meeting to get through, right? So, um, but I think the intent is that we are focused, we are attentive, um, we're displaying behavior we expect of other people in meetings. Um, so I thi- I think it's appropriate.
I mean, the question I have, I think, I don't, I'm always uncomfortable putting anything in policies that we're not going to be able to enforce it. I would rather be more comfortable with us having some sort of like a ethic statement or something along that lines where individuals, board members would sign saying that they would, uh, that sign saying that they're gonna adhere to it. It's more like a guidance than anything as well. I don't think any board members here is really communicating with other individuals other than Katie who messages her, uh, your kids.
There are confirmation across the street tonight. Uh, do I pick him up or is dad gotta come?
Yeah, so, so I, that's my, that, I don't, like, I'm not against it. I just don't think if this is the right place to put it. That's just my honest opinion. Just to add, because- Just to add, because I feel like if it's in the policy, we have to enforce it. That's, that's my strong pickings.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, I just, I'm a rule follower, so then I, I will not engage in that. I don't, I don't want to break, break a rule, so I'm fine keeping it in. I just wanted the clarification.
I could go either way on this. Um, I would say take out prohibited for sure. Um, but if there's maybe more clarification that it, I don't know. It's, it's nice to see that it's, um, if anyone were to look at it, that these are the rules. We're not using our phones for purposes of communicating with someone during a meeting that influences the meeting. I understand that point of it, but also, I mean, I get Katie's point, too, if there's an emergency. And how do we communicate that?
I would offer that, or we could, I can rewrite that to be focused on, on more of an ethical statement to what I hear the spirit of it being drop the prohibited, soften the language a little bit, but make it clear that this is what you expect of each other, and you might call each other on it, but it's not something that's requiring a consequence or heavy, you know, definition.
Okay. Sure.
And it, and whether you want to strike it or you want to kick it back to us.
Yeah, I think you're on a kickback.
Postpone, uh, to the next meeting would be a better answer. I'll, I'll second that, to postpone it to the next.
Larry made a motion to postpone to the next meeting. Yi has the second. Is there any further discussion on this one? Hearing none, this requires a voice vote. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
That passes. Next up, consent agenda 166.1. Larry, this was.
I was mine. I think it's more clerical, but, uh, paragraph L down there is included with the blank. We, we fill in the blanks here on something? No. I, I think that when you make the, when the changes go away, you know, and help me here, the green goes away and the X's go away. Will paragraph L go away since there's nothing in it?
If it's not checked, it goes away.
Good, so then I.
Larry, which one are you on?
Uh, consent, 66.1, consent agenda, paragraph L is in Larry.
Thank you. We leave it in so that you can add something if the board wishes to.
I see. Ah, I don't wish to. So then we don't need to make any change here. The clerical update will fix it.
All right, so.
It's fine as is, as far as I'm concerned. Uh, yes.
I just want to add a question here. I, I see under K other routine items as presented by the superintendent. What would be considered a routine item?
Well, I mean, I think what's currently in there are the routine items. I don't think we stretch much beyond that. Yeah, but, but.
Buses in there.
A report would be one that's not in there this month. What's another routine item, Ellen, that isn't there this month? I mean, employment financials, um. Yeah, I, I think we're probably pretty cautious about, we, we put it in the regular agenda. If it's not something you're typically seeing, um, similarly, we, we, this, in this giant, uh, policy go-around, um, what is a technical change and what is not, I think we're also pretty.
Second reading's a policy.
Second reading, yeah, which, which you typically see in there, but.
Are you okay with it?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Then, I move approval as is. That's what the procedure we're doing.
Is there a second with that one?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one passes. Next up is item, uh, E6, policy 2522.
That one's also one of my questions. Um, I had a more of a 5,000-foot question. A lot of schools have had a lot of trouble, you know, with individuals wanting books removed from, a lot of theirs, that's a classic. This policy doesn't really address whether the, the procedure here would be for a parent wanting a book removed from access for their child, or whether they want a book removed from a library for everybody. And I think those are two very different situations. Now, you can always go to and have, get a waiver for your child, right, Jeff? On a class, uh, if you don't want something in a curriculum. Personally, that, that procedure's elsewhere, I believe.
Yeah, so that, uh, if there's a topic in a, uh, a course or a, um, a unit that the parent objects to, we have a process to provide alternative.
So, really, that's elsewhere.
Yeah.
So then this is really just addressing a, a parent who wants something removed from this for everybody?
Yes, however, the informal, before you get into this.
Oh, yeah, there's a whole chain. Before we get here, but.
A, a parent may, practically speaking, it may start out as I want this book out of the library for everyone, and we're going to talk about what those unique needs are for that family, for that parent. And it may lead to them saying, "I just really don't want my son or daughter to read that." And it may not move past that, so.
You say the library, make a note, and you go, "It's fixed."
Yep, um, but this also is the process for if it's more of your first.
More of my first, I, I'm okay with that. I just wanted to make sure I understood this, that word fits. So, I don't have any real question that needs to be changed or added to, for my child only. I think it's adequate that way. But the question wasn't clear. So, I move approval as is. Unless there's somebody else kind of question.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? None, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next up, employment of substitutes?
Uh, this is just my lack of understanding in the employment arena. And the paragraph down there's got the green change. It said, uh, person's going to be considered a long-term substitute, and that the position will be terminated at the end of the school year, which I guess makes sense if they're a long-term sub, because the person they were subbing for, I guess, is assumed to come back. But then I don't understand the green stuff. Subject to the issuance of a reasonable insurance to the substitute regarding, uh, intend to provide substitute next year. Wh- where do you ever get?
Tell me, you can talk about reasonable assurance, and it's.
So, reasonable assurance letters we issue to both substitutes as well as, um, support staff because they don't work year-round. So, essentially, it says at the end of the year, a letter that says, "You're welcome to come back and work next year." But there is that gap, um, and part of that has to do with unemployment benefits. It's just the nature of how that is. So, our substitutes, they get a reasonable assurance letter that says, "You can be a substitute again next year." And in fact, we ask, "Do you want to come back?" Because if they say, "Nope, this was it, we're done," we can term them per se within our system. Yep, you want to go back? Okay, you're reasonably assured that we'll have an employment for you again next year in that role.
And the next policy you have is.
Very similar.
Saying really the same thing.
For, for the permanent employees.
And, and identifying that you can't make a claim based on employment here.
I, I'd like to talk about that one separate, because I see different problems.
Gotcha.
Well, same problem, different. So, I move approval as is of this one of, uh, uh, 3120.04.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Next one.
41.
4124.
And this is kind of the same concept of reasonable assurance. Now, in, in the, we're at the working world I come from, you don't, you don't get a reasonable assurance. Uh, if you're given a, if we're going to give them a reasonable assurance, we should get some quid pro quo that they're going to come back. Now, I understand we, we like this so that we have some sense if they're coming back. You know, that helps us, but then they should also assure they are going to come back so we don't find out two weeks before school that this senior high, science teachers not coming back. We've given them a letter, but we can get anything from them? So, help me with employment.
Yep, that, that is, yep, that's.
Get anything in return.
Yep, no, we ask even with the subs, that, "Do you intend to come back?" Yep, we know. But support staff, yep, we say, "Let us know if not you're assured that you'll have a job." And, and some of that is, it may not be the exact same setting, same classrooms, whatever, but a similar job in a similar role of similar hours. Yep.
So, different category of employer, and you're 4,000s now.
Yeah, I'm not, I understand the temps, but I, the, 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 full-time people, why don't we get an assurance that they are going to come back? Reasonable, not binding kind of a thing. This is reasonable, not binding on us either. Yeah, we understand. Class sizes change. We have the, we have the ability to cancel out some class that some teacher was teaching. Hopefully, we find a different teaching spot for them, but we don't.
These are support staff, I think, specific in this one, not teachers, if that changes your.
I see, okay, support staff. All right, my bad. Move rule.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
That passes. We made it through them all. Uh, next up in our agenda is convention. On this 85-degree day, get ready for the negative 25-degree day. That will be the convention. Um, January 20th through the 23rd, 2026. Please let Ellen know next, in October, next meeting, um, if you will be able to attend for hotel rooms and all that. Um, also listed in background is petitions and community, or in your packet is petitions and communications, our future meeting dates. We have the annual budget and meeting hearing, October 22nd at 6:00 PM, and then the regular board meeting following the annual meeting. That is the end of our agenda tonight, so it has been good to see the classrooms filled, playgrounds utilized, and friendships rekindled and learning happening again. Uh, we are excited for the fun and productive school year ahead. Thank you. I will consider this meeting adjourned.